It is now 6:30. Our meeting is called to order. Do we have any additions and deletions this evening? No additions or deletions? We are going to be looking at select board minutes from January 6, 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please look over and let me know anything you notice. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So move. We are now looking at pay orders of January 21, 2025. Please make a note that the San Al Napa bill is $100 too much. $100 was credited back, so instead of being $799.99, it is actually $699.99, which brings our total down $100 from $27,919.58 to $27,819.58. Do we have a motion?
I'm moving.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, please look over the pay orders. I see we got salt fill. Does that figure look about what we were expecting it to be?
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
There you go.
Does it have a tonnage with that number?
So we're not quite sure how much we got?
Yeah, that's...
Here's your bill.
That would help. What's the tonnage?
Two of them here. So one's 1227.
Okay.
And it's 1230.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So for about 2,500?
So I'm kind of baffled.
Okay.
On this. This one's 126. And another load, and right behind it was 129. They brought down... 90 tons there.
Okay.
And they brought in roughly 90 tons.
Okay.
And roughly...
How much for the other one?
Bulk salt was 3386. Yeah, how much is the salt? It's just under 100 a ton, so that'd be right.
Okay.
And then this one... No, it's not 90, it's 2245 tons.
Okay. Oh.
Yeah, so it's right.
It's supposed to be 8725 delivered.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Is that what it is?
So that's right, because we used a ton of it. It's only three loads, actually.
Okay. Okay.
And they've had to... They hauled a bunch of sand last week.
Oh.
So... Because Pike was open.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, not hearing anything. All those in favor accepting the pay orders? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on. Well, Commissioner report.
Well, not a whole lot to report on it, other than Mother Nature. Like I said, they just hauled in a bunch of sand and stuff last week. Goodness, salt, you saw. They had a couple little breakdowns with trucks, but they got them both running, just hoses and fuses and stuff. Everything's been running pretty good, for the most part. I don't think there's any other issues down there at the moment.
That's good.
Other than the sand shed.
Boy with the boot?
Oh, boy with the boot.
Yes.
That's my... I didn't call him on that. I will. Down tomorrow.
The salt shed, or sand shed. With the CPG good for a year? Right now, it kind of makes the most sense to put the solar... If we're going to do the solar, put the solar on the salt shed, sand shed, but you're going to rebuild it. You're going to rebuild it and have it done within a year. We've got to make some quick decisions.
Yes.
Very quick, like within the next four or five days. On how big, how much, where, who, what, when?
Yeah, I know, that's the key.
Because you're now... If not, you have to either have a special town meeting to approve it.
Right.
Or you're going to have to push it out here.
You're... We started this two years ago?
I think even longer than that. I think it's even longer than that, honestly, so...
That's the problem, is it's...
I had a discussion with Todd Galliano. Did he get back to you?
He sent me an email that says he would revise it. And Tom Fort suggested sending him some of the recommendations from the floodplain manager, which I did.
Great.
Yes, for a site plan. We don't have a site plan, but I sent him what the listers gave me.
Excellent, because he does... He was talking to me about it. And he does have suggestions about what... About floodplain and what to do with what that will mean.
Mark was saying it has to be raised four feet.
Right.
Right. So with it being raised four feet, how does that affect the garage?
No different than it was before.
Okay.
Because the garage is going to stay the same.
Right.
As long as it comes up to the elevation of the garage, you're going to open one door and open that door, and it's going to run into one L.
I think Todd had a concern that it was going to impede on the garage in some way.
No.
Okay. Okay.
No, because we're not changing the elevation of the garage, as far as I know, that's staying the same.
Right, and he was concerned about what it would mean, so...
No. What's that?
So definitely...
Yeah, well, yeah, the grandfather.
We'll see him tomorrow, so I will say yes. He understands that this is going through untimely. I will reiterate how timely it is.
You're... No matter how you do it, unless you figure out some funding, like Mark says, really fast.
Yes.
You're going to be in trouble.
Yep.
And you're... I'm going to make a wild guess of half a million on this.
I've... He was talking above four.
Above four?
Yes.
So my half a million's about right?
Yeah.
That doesn't include your solar, whatever the solar cost to put it started.
No, this is just for the structure of the...
Yeah.
And he was talking that the costs are up above four.
Yeah, and it's...
It's hard for me to think about rushing it because of the solar.
Me too.
You know? We gotta just do this thing and...
Like I said, it's been three years, and I kind of backed off on it because I don't... I never figured it was going to get done.
Right.
I just, you know...
Tom also said there's a chance that we could get an extension, too.
Exactly, he did, on the CPG.
Yeah, I agree, but...
Yep, no, I... We hear the... Yes, things need to move. Yep.
I mean, you need a plan on it so you can... Now, so you can start planning it over the next year.
Exactly. Okay.
Because there's a lot of work, and it's...
I know.
The kicker is, it's going to be done between the 1st of April and I would say the 1st of November.
Yeah.
Which will probably never happen.
No.
That's your timeframe, that's...
That's not...
In order to get the benefit of the solar... No?
It's our salt shed. If we don't... If you don't build it by the time you empty it in the spring...
It's going to fall down.
No.
No, no.
You've got to fill it back up and have salt available and sand available to start your winter.
Yes.
So you've got three, four months...
Exactly.
Four or five months there to build it. I mean, it's doable, but...
They should have been setting money aside for the... For that, a slug fund for that, a slug fund for vehicles. That's kind of just... By the wayside, I brought it up numerous times, and it stopped, so I just stopped doing it.
So when I went to that gathering, they said... The people, they were saying that to do it ourselves and not go through, we're using the $500,000 as the... It was around that, was the extreme price. And then when they did it themselves, without getting grants, they were able to do it a lot cheaper than that, so we may want to...
Well, on the steel... I don't know, the steel building...
I don't know what style.
There was no grants involved in that. It was just an outright price for the installation, the building itself and the installation of it. And when Todd gave that price two years or three years ago, he was half of what a TARP building was going to be.
Yes.
And I thought it was an extremely good price.
Yes.
Because this was other towns. I wish I could remember which towns were doing it themselves and did it cheaper.
Well, like I said...
But it was a tin roof was when it was one.
Cooper put a corset hut up. They put... They stacked...
Blocks.
Blocks, all the way around it, and then put a canvas over the top of it.
Yeah.
Plenty of room. Great idea, but not for... Not for any other use. It's a salt shed, it's all there.
Devin was there, right?
Yeah.
I can email him, find out who did it.
Great.
Yeah, because I'm trying to...
That would be good.
Trying to think of like, who's... We were sitting in a circle.
Right.
Which town it was.
Another... I looked today in some of the steel buildings, 60 by 100, or... I'm not sure what the size is.
I think we said 70 by 1... 60 by 120?
Something like that.
Sticks in my mouth.
Was it 60 by 100 or 70 by 100?
Yeah.
It was around $45,000 for steel.
Yeah, but what kind of steel? What size walls?
Oh, I didn't... I think they were 10-foot walls.
Yeah, see, these are...
Now, I know you've got to go taller.
We have to be 16-foot walls on top of four-foot above-grade...
Right.
Walls to get our clearance to commit to the trucks.
Yes.
I think Todd was 20 or 24-foot walls.
I think he was.
On that, yeah. There's quite a difference.
And what he did was he priced out what it was going to be now, compared to what it was going to be then, and it has...
I figured double.
Yep.
Mostly double.
Are we... Are we... We subject to the zoning laws, right?
Yeah.
Outbuildings have a maximum of 15 feet unless you get special approval. Just throwing that out there.
I don't think it's going to be any higher than the town garage, overall.
I mean, Eric goes at the meeting when the floodplain manager calls.
I don't think...
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm not cheating. The... Your outside, your peak of your roof cannot be any taller than 15 feet of an outbuilding.
I thought it was 35.
Well, if your house is 35. I think, if I read it correctly, because what I built my garage...
This isn't a home site, either.
Yeah, I'm just going to say it's a shed.
That's true.
That's not even very high for a shed.
I built my garage, I couldn't go over 15 feet for the...
To the peak.
To the peak.
Right. And that was... Was that on commercial or residential?
Residential. But maybe different, I don't know.
I don't know. It's definitely going to be up higher because you've got to raise it four feet to start with.
To start, right.
And then...
Yeah, it's going to be up two feet above the plane, or foot above the... Yeah, it's going to be a foot above the floodplain, and then a foot above that, or something, I think.
Yeah, I know. I thought it was four feet, you and I talked about it.
I think so, yeah.
It's pretty close to where elevation of the rescue squad building is.
That's where it'll end up being, yeah.
All right. Yeah, well, that's logical, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's anything we can do now to get things rolling, or, you know, with this year's budget, or...
Well, we'll definitely keep pursuing. Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Look, Mike, that's... Like, question, you always want to do this. It's in the select board's hands.
That's right. Okay, well, keep moving.
Julie, is this something we do a bond for?
I've never done a bond. I've never done a bond. I've only gone through either the state or a bank.
That's a lot of money to just throw into the budget.
Oh, I know. I can't do that. That's why we talked about it three years ago, to start working on this. It's the same thing, Rob, as a truck fund, that I tried to get put ahead, $100,000 a year. Just set it aside so we have it. You don't have to worry about where your money comes from your vehicle. And that's set idle now for three years.
Shoot for 2030?
Yeah. It's just like your Quick Road Bridge. Once your $35,000 isn't going to cover your engineering costs on it now.
That's true.
As much as we don't want to raise budgets, because we... But it's going to become shockingly...
Yes, it will.
...the time we replace a vehicle or anything, and it just... We need to start planning accordingly.
Yep. It's true, we do. We need to do this. Okay.
So maybe the bond is what we're going to have to do?
I think till the select board figures out what they want to do money-wise, there's no sense even, you know, even look into this, but it's going to be... You're going to get half a million.
I would come up with an idea of what you're looking for and go out and get a few estimates to put things together over the next three or four months with an idea. And then, when it comes time to next year, you can start planning on getting it ready for your 2026...
That's true.
2020, yeah, 2026 budget.
But by then, it'll change...
You can add 10% to it, or 15%.
Exactly. We need a number to start with.
Well, we got Todd giving one, right?
Yeah, we've got to have three.
Right.
But...
Right.
Once you come up with an idea of the size of the building, and we know what we've got to do, I mean...
If we've got to raise it four feet, we've got to do some measurements now. Because we can't... Because we have to have a toe...
Exactly.
Off the measurement towards your garage. We can't encroach on that too hard.
That's what Todd was talking about.
Yeah, just the toe.
He was talking... We talked to him on the phone the other night there, pushing it right up against the bank. Try it back, because it'll go...
Yeah.
Get rid of the cup, whatever's out behind it, and push it all the way back.
Within 25 feet of the railroad.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
25 feet.
Is that your brotherway?
Yeah. Rear road's 25 feet, you can't do the thing.
Okay.
So, but that was his suggestion, stuff it right back up.
Oh, yeah, you want it back all the way, because it's going to stick out.
Right. Exactly.
So we'll have to remeasure that all.
Okay.
Try to get that done next week.
Sounds good. Moving on.
Let me know, I'll meet you over there sometime.
Yeah.
If I'm around, I'll meet you over there.
Great, thank you, Mark. And thank you, Phil. And I will be having a conversation with Todd ASAP. Okay. Moving on. Certificate of Mileage enclosed is the Vermont... The VTran Certificate of Highway Mileage. And we need authorization for a select board to sign the certificate. Is this a motion, or is this...
Just to sign. Yeah, Phil said there's no changes to the mileage, so...
There's no changes. It looks like in-town miles.
Did you see this?
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll second it. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was that Carol on the mic?
Yes.
A Mike.
Mike.
Mark.
Yes, Mike.
That's how we're going to get you to do it again. We're going to put you on the mic.
Mike, 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 Mike.
Yeah.
It's not even Wednesday.
When you do your write-in, write in Mike.
There we go.
I don't care what the last name is.
Okay. Honorable mentions. Sanford Wither... Witherell Jr. for his donation to the Sugar Hill Cemetery, Mill River Interact... To the Sugar Hill Cemetery. Mill River Interact Club for raising and donating funds to restore the boy with the boot. Wallingford residents recycled 5,288 pounds of plastic in 2024 as part of the T-Rex program at the transfer station. Thank you very much. We do not have public for public comments, so moving on to the fiscal year 26 budget and warning review to approve. So enclosed is the fiscal year 26 budget proposal. Number 5114, office expenses under town government is to increase $1,000 to a total of $15,000 due to the anticipated three-year GoDaddy email charges. Do you want to take a look at that?
I've got a question about that. I mean, why do we have to have GoDaddy? Why can't we have WallingfordVermont.org or .gov? Why is it .com? I mean, that... I remember we got that, we said at Cleveland. Went to GoDaddy and said, psh, but with $5. You know, now it's like, what? How is this working? How is this working that we have to pay that?
Well, it's all of our emails through the website, and it's for three years.
So the website is GoDaddies?
Yes.
Okay.
They have a host of the website, yeah.
So that's what we're paying for?
Right. When we... We used to have them on...
No matter what our address is.
Right, we used to have VTEL on...
$300 a year, $330 a year's not bad.
No. And it gives each, you know, zoning list... Zoning listers, town clerk, me, I mean, it's several.
I think it was cheaper to do that than it was to go to either...
I mean, we tried...
We talked about it a few years ago. Leagues of Cities and Towns, and they were... To get a .org or, you know...
Yeah.
What they... First of all, they're hard to get, and they were more expensive through, like, the leagues of cities and towns, where you have to go to get them, so...
I thought they were free.
No.
No.
All right. All right.
No matter what you use for a domain, somebody has to pay for it somewhere.
That's right.
Line item 5151, town hall expenses went up $1,500 to $21,500 to cover the cost of the required five-year elevator weight test. 4514, transfer station fees under revenue increased $1,000 to $41,000 in anticipated income.
Right.
And line 5112, elections and town meeting under town government was reduced by $200 to $1,100. Do we see any adjustments we want to make to those or to any line items?
Would it be in our best interest to add $10,000 into the building fund or another line item to cover engineering and permitting fees for this garage to get... So we can get things started? Because it's all part of things that have to be done in advance.
How does the rest of the board feel about that?
I don't know where it would go.
At some point.
If you did that now, in July, you have at least that much to get things started.
It would make sense to put it into the building fund, wouldn't it?
How much do we have in the building fund, Sandy? She's got it in the town report. Building fund has $128,000.
$128,000?
I mean, I guess we can pull it out of that. You would have to add it more.
Right.
That's probably... I didn't know what was in there, but it's just something you want to...
That's at the end of December.
Right. You're going to put more in from the current budget, so...
Yeah. And that's your first payment on your shed when you build it.
Yep. Okay.
Could speed up the process a little bit.
Covered the deposit a bit.
Well, it's...
Yes.
But then your payment's not due for a year.
So we're adding 20, almost $21,000 from the budget we're in right now to that amount.
That would get you...
Let's go to 150.
We can't... Well, I'm just... I'm still trying to figure out how to get the salt shed moving forward.
Right.
We can't plan on building that salt shed with the money that's in the building fund. Get it started, get the deposit on it, and then go back to the town and ask for funds, can we? We can't put... Is that not really allowed, is it? I don't think so, I just...
Putting the cart before the horse.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there.
Your deposit's probably going to be 50% on the building cost.
Right, but I just... This would get the old one down, you know, even that $100,000, we'd get you a foundation and the old one down, I would think. Or the old one down and, you know, site work and a foundation, maybe. So you have a slab to deal with next year, maybe.
Well, it'd be frost walls, all it's going to be.
Frost, yeah.
Maple walls.
Right.
What do we have in our Fernfield Farms fund right now? Because remember we've been...
She's getting it in the town report, too.
Okay.
Keep it up. I was just going to say.
Because that's another part of money.
Yeah.
That we earmark towards large infrastructure projects to benefit the town. And I know it's not near the amount that we need, but it could be a start.
Where you take a loan and you finance it over...
There we go.
30 years, 30 years, whatever.
Yes, okay.
And then just finance your payment.
There we go.
Yeah.
I remember an article...
The balance of the Revenue Augmentation Trust as of December was $80,000.
$80,000 in that.
Children, be loved, borrow $50,000, remember that?
Which is just about $50,000.
Borrowing, yeah. That'd be a good start.
Yes.
So, anything... Any financing over five years, you have to go through the bond process, which I've never done before. And it has to go to the voters, whether you get a bond or you go to a bank. So I think over five years...
I think that's the way to go. You know, just...
Yeah.
The whole thing. All in.
Borrow it for five years, 10 years, or whatever it takes. And sell it to the town, sell it to the people. I think we ought to go for the whole thing.
Right.
Okay.
Probably want a town meeting this year.
Yes.
Make a note somewhere as you're doing your thing, just to bring it up and say, we need a salt shed and then a sand shed. Next year, this is what we're going to propose, so just...
So we just want to get...
Don't like title.
Yes. We just want to get the wording together, help.
Because I'll be on the other side asking lots of questions.
You are asking lots of questions. So right now, you can help me.
No, you'll still be at the table, this one.
No, I said the next...
Okay, the next one, yeah.
Oh, yes.
But this would get it... This would get it started and explained.
Yes. Okay. Okeydokey.
Next one, I'll ask you the other side. No, you don't need to.
And we'll say, Mark, do you remember? So let's see. Other than that, and I don't think we're going to make... It doesn't seem like we're going to make any adjustments. Okay, so...
And then you have... We did add Article 7 about the boy with the boot reserve on two.
Yes. So this proposed fiscal year 26 budget, it's going to increase the amount to be raised in prosperity taxes from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 by just $1,333 or 0.12%. The change in the total budget from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 is... is thirty-nine thousand two hundred fifty or two point six-three percent. An estimated tax rate based on the twenty twenty-four grant list is point four six zero four cents compared to point four five nine eight cents in fiscal year twenty-five. And so please notice, Sandy just said, Article seven was added. We can delete it if we wish to establish a reserve fund for the boy with the boot donations in case any money remains after June thirtieth. Do we want to add this article? I would say yes, but do other people say?
I like it.
Do you need a motion to accept the tax rate or the tax?
We'll get there, why don't we see about the article first?
Yeah, just look by consensus.
So the article's by consensus, are we all good with the article?
Yeah.
We are all good with the article now, do we approve the warning?
Yeah, so you don't, the tax rate will be set in August, so this is just to approve the warning.
Okay, great, so do we approve the warning?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
And we need a motion?
I would do.
So we'll need a motion.
I move we approve the warning.
That's accurate.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The warning is so approved. Now, we are moving on to the dedication. And I shall read the dedication. Last August, when the town's beloved boy with the leaking boot statue was a target of vandals, citizens from every corner of town, county, state, and beyond Vermont's borders reached out to local officials with offers of support. In response, the select board established a fund to restore the historic landmark situated in a fountain in the heart of the village. Donations large and small poured in from current Wallingford residents and those who lived here long ago, community and school groups, local organizations, businesses, and more. Funds raised have been earmarked for the restoration and future maintenance of this iconic landmark. The boy with the leaking boot first became part of Wallingford's history in eighteen ninety-eight in memory of Arnold Young, the owner of the Wallingford Inn. It was first used as a trough for thirsty horses, and then in nineteen twenty-seven, it was installed on the inn's lawn. It has deservedly earned the reputation as the civic symbol of the town of Wallingford. For all of those steadfast citizens of the community, region, state, and its neighbors who reached out with moral, financial, and strategic support, the citizens of Wallingford with heartfelt gratitude dedicate the twenty twenty-four annual town report to the giving souls who helped finance the restoration of Wallingford's favorite son, the boy with the leaking boot.
Kudos.
I think that means we approved.
Kudos, yeah. Couldn't have done it better myself.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Okay. So now, we are moving on to the employee handbook update.
So I actually had some other updates.
Oh.
Um, but I'm wondering if we want to maybe table this a bit, because, uh.
Okay.
I like Jill does payroll, and I, I've asked her for some input, if you look at the overtime section on, on the, it's a little, it needs clarification.
Okay.
Because, you know, if you have overtime.
Yes.
Um, if you have a, a week with a, a holiday, they work, and a week where they take time off or CTO, and how that'll get supplied to overtime and all that, it's a little gray area, so it, it really needs to be clarified in the employee handbook, I think, so. I mean, I think this is a good start, but.
So shall we table this for now?
But you can talk about the, if you want to change your mind or make any differences on the two or four thousand.
Okay.
Because it was in there already as four.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we just discuss it? The town, um, so the following paragraph, uh, this is from the employee handbook last updated in twenty twenty-one. It has the following paragraph, the town shall offer, if desired, um, a four thousand dollar annual buyout to those full-time employees who choose not to take medical insurance. The buyout is not offered to employees who qualify for Medicare. Buyout will be paid in quarterly sums or as agreed to by the select board. So at our last meeting, we said two thousand, it's already in the handbook for four thousand. Um, so do we want to leave it as is in the handbook, or do we want to amend it to the two thousand we talked about? So how?
I wasn't on in twenty twenty-one, but, uh, somebody said that was, that was the good thing and put it in writing, so I think that's what we oughta go with.
How many hours are considered full-time?
Thirty.
Huh?
How many hours is considered full-time?
Yeah, just, in other words, is, is some places thirty-two hours is a full-time job, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty. How many hours does a town consider a full-time employee?
Well, they, it's.
Is that in there?
I can go right to the, um, you have to, I think it's, uh, thirty. And there's different wording, I sent all of you the whole handbook, so you can look at it, there's different wording, it does say thirty, but then it says the road crew, is forty hours a week, so it does clarify both of those things in there.
Okay. So road crew is forty, and other employees.
An employee must work a minimum of thirty hours per week year-round to be considered full-time. The normal road crew works, week shall be forty hours. So I think it's kind of differentiating between, you know, we expect the road crew to work forty, but at, at least thirty hours year-round is full-time.
Where I was going with that, and I'm not sure, is a thirty-hour-a-week employee should not, well, not, should not have, but it is more of a benefit for a forty-hour-a-week, or if a thirty-hour-a-week employee got the four thousand dollar benefit for working less hours, and a forty-hour-a-week employee got the four thousand dollars back, it's not fair to them to have to work forty hours where the other group can only work thirty to be classified as a full-time and get their four thousand dollars. If that makes sense.
I think some of this might be based around hours of operation of the town hall itself. Would that be correct?
Well, also, I mean, if the, the road crew, say the road crew member who worked forty hours a week is taking fifteen thousand dollar insurance, but the town hall employee who was working, they'd say thirty-five hours a week or whatever, is only taking a four thousand dollar, we're still had. Or two.
I don't know, I just, like I said, you know, a thirty-hour employee.
There is, just so that you know, there are no full-time thirty-hour employees.
Right.
I mean, that, that.
I know, but I'm just, that's the way it's worded, so.
Yeah, I mean, you could change any, any of this information, that's why I think, like, maybe now's a good time to go through it all and see if there's anything else you want changed.
Hey, all right.
Do we want to go through the whole thing now, or do we want to, what's our? Preference. Or do you want to discuss this one thing and table the rest of it till when Jill can be here?
Whatever you want.
I'm afraid if we change it now, it's, it'll make a no matter how we do it, it'll make a mess, not make a mess, it'll.
Right. I think since it was already established.
Yeah.
What do you think, Rob, do you agree? Disagree? With the wording being four thousand before and not two thousand, would you like to keep the, I think you said you wanted to keep the four.
Four thousand.
Okay, so I think we're gonna keep the wording as is on that, and we're not going to do the two.
Okay, and then we'll just table the rest.
Table the rest.
Okay.
Because we can talk about the hours, we can talk about the overtime.
Yep.
All right.
What is the average hours here? Because this is your other, full-time employees are all here, right?
Right.
So what do you got, what do you, what do you guys do for hour?
Well, we, we work eight to four-thirty, four days a week, and then meetings.
Right.
Right.
So it's different, different hours, different weeks.
Right.
Yeah. Yes. Carolyn, was there anything you wanted to mention?
No, I was just looking at the IRS's, what's considered full-time hours.
Oh, okay.
The first thing said thirty, average of thirty-five is the, is the normal, but then there's some, um, adjustments for, which does say, so I'm trying to figure out what those adjustments are, that says that it can be thirty, but they're, the first, all the other documents were saying thirty-five.
All right.
So we may, when we are reevaluating, just correct the wording that we have.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds.
Good. Let me just write that.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Select board comments and concerns. I would like to bring up a concern that, um, from our last storm, the sidewalks in the village are very icy and have not been sanded yet. So for the fire district, please address the sidewalks. While we have fresh snow on top of it, that's gonna melt, and it's just gonna be an ice lick.
I heard somebody mention the other night at the fire budget meeting that, uh, the tractor broke down again.
In what?
The tractor was broken down again.
Oh, okay.
Really?
I don't know, I heard them mention something about that, because we were talking about it as they were walking out, how old the tractor was, yeah, it's broken again.
I didn't think it was that old.
I didn't either.
It's not that old.
They're saying, huh?
The one they're using over to the boys' camp's not that old.
Yeah.
No, the one they use for plow is not that old.
No.
They're saying this thing's like twenty years old plus.
Oh, no, that's the, the old one they got down to the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Oh.
That, that's what they're talking about, they got the old, old, old ones down there.
The one with the V plow, I want to use for plowing the sidewalks, I thought they had replaced.
Yes, they have.
I don't believe it's five years old.
No, I looked like so.
I think it's less than that.
Yes.
Any other comments or concerns from the board? So for other business, the constable sent an email saying he does not want to be reappointed after town meeting and march.
There you go, Mark.
I think, uh, we'll have Sandy write a complimentary letter accepting this resignation.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Phil, you want another stipend?
You do such a good job.
There is a response to the question that Rob asks, um, asked
Yep.
about the covenants for possible solar arrays. Um, I read through that deed language, and it does not seem to preclude putting up solar panels. There is no use restriction.
Hmm?
There's no use, did you see, Rob, from Shannon?
Yeah. Uh, it says to be used as health and recreation.
Well, it says, it's more than that, um. Okay. It says, okay. Okay.
Park and playgrounds for health and recreation.
It is a condition of this conveyance that the premises is conveyed, thereby become a park and playground for the health and recreation of the inhabitants of my native villages. Should the premises not be used for this purpose, if, for the term of three years in succession, they shall by virtue become the property of the fire district. Um, it is used as a park and playground. Um, it says without restriction, putting an enclosment over parking does not restrict use of a park or a playground.
No, we were talking the
Stone Meadow.
Stone Meadow side hill.
Right.
To put solar panels on, not, not
Oh.
covering the.
I thought it was down by the ball field.
Well, we had talked about the ball field, that that's, won't be any restrictions there.
Right.
But then we also brought up using that side hill in Stone Meadow, the south-facing side hill for solar panels.
And it would restrict recreation.
It would restrict, it would restrict, um, park and playground, to put it on the hill there, would, so we can't put them on the hill.
Yeah.
Right.
There we go.
Yeah. Go on a solid shit.
Yes, okay.
Sometimes.
So, I think that's it.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is adjourned.